Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening in grateful appreciation for the many blessings that you send our way. We are thankful for our hard-working students, our supportive parents, and our dedicated staff who give tirelessly each day in an effort to move our school district forward. Be with our staff as they try to meet the needs of every child and give them both the patience and wisdom to know how to be the best possible role model and nurturing adult for each child in their charge. As we enter the second quarter of our school year, we pray for continued guidance and support as we strive to give our best efforts. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voce.
Here. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft. Mr. Egan is now witness. Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dysard?
Here.
Dr. Lewis is not here. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mrs. Nikosia?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. Before we go on to the regular agenda at this time, we as a board would like to take a moment of silence to recognize Ms. Sue DeFess, our principal at St. Bernard Middle, who passed. If we could have a moment of silence, please, for Ms. Sue DeFess. And Sue was a longtime resident of St. Bernard Parish. She went to school here. I went to Andrew Jackson with Sue. She was always a wonderful person. She was a longtime employee as a teacher and a principal at St. Bernard Middle School. And we know all the students, the parents, and the teachers there are affected as well as her family. So our deepest condolences and sympathies go out to the entire St. Bernard Middle School family and Sue DeFess's family, her husband and her boys. Frank DeFess and her two boys, our deepest condolences. And we thank Sue from the bottom of our hearts for all the things that she did for our students and for working so wonderfully with all of us.
She was dedicated and supportive.
That she really was.
Do you want to say anything else, Ms. Voce?
Just to reiterate what you said, Mrs. Dysard. I've known Sue for many, many, many years. And she was such a warm and nurturing person and had a great love of her students and a great pride in St. Bernard Middle. The kids and the faculty and staff were pulling for her through that long illness. And they did a very touching ceremony with a balloon release for her this past Wednesday. And I guess we all have to face that at some time. But that family and the community at St. Bernard Middle is a very strong, family-based group. And I know that with the support of each other, they will get through this. And I just want to give a few kudos to Angela Seibert, who has been acting as principal in Miss DeFess's absence. She's done a remarkable job. It was a very difficult situation that she was in. And I just want to publicly thank her for everything she's been doing to make sure that the school and the faculty and the students were moving forward as long as Miss DeFess was undergoing the illness that she had.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. Okay, Mr. England?
Yes, a point of privilege, Ms. Dysard. Thank you. Tonight, we celebrate a birthday before them's birthday. I think it's Miss Diana Dysard.
Ah.
Happy birthday, Ms. Dysard.
Thank you, Mr. England. Many more. Thank you. Thank y'all very much. And as I always say, every birthday is a good birthday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. England, and fellow board members. Okay. Next item on the agenda, super news. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Alex LaPrae Schneider. Good evening.
Good evening. The communications team is excited to bring you this month's super news. Before we do so, I would just like to draw your attention to hand out four in your packets this evening called October Communications Report. There are a couple of upcoming events that I just want to bring your attention to. The first is at St. Bernard Middle School, which is their Moonlight in a Movie this Friday. Gates open at 5:30. Activities will be from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. And Caroline, which is the featured movie for the evening, will play at 7 o'clock. Superintendent John White will be at Davies Elementary this upcoming Monday, October 24th. The assembly will start at 10 o'clock, and there will be a short reception to follow. Shawmet High School's five-and-two football team, Go Owls, will be playing Helen Cox for the homecoming game next Friday, October 28th. Pre-game activities for homecomings start at 6:20. Kickoff is for 7 o'clock, and the court will be presented at halftime. Boo at the Barn, this is the second annual Boo at the Barn, is hosted by the Shawmet High Key Club and features many of our schoolchildren throughout the district, will be the following Saturday, October 29th, from 11 to 4 p.m. Tickets are $2, and the event is at Dockville Farms. And finally, Shawmet High School Live presents Robin Hood, November 3rd, 4th, and 5th, at the Shawmet High School Cultural Arts Center. Shows are at 7 o'clock, and ticket information can be found by calling the Shawmet High front office. This month's super news, we are excited to spotlight three outstanding teachers, an administrator, and a support staff member. Each month, these amazing educators are highlighted on our Facebook page and on our websites. We are also excited to give them some love in super news. For the following months, we are hoping to have board members introduce the three different teachers. On your report, you will find the months in which those teachers are scheduled, the schools that you guys have been partnered with, and the dates that we are hoping to film your introduction, which will be prior to the scorecard naming for that month. If those dates don't work for you, please feel free to reach out to me, and I will reschedule that, or if you have any questions or concerns. Regarding the scheduling of the features, they are random. Our teachers are surprised by their feature as a public shout-out. And so, every school gets three, and you'll see they fall at kind of different times throughout the semester. So, without further ado, here is this month's super news.
Vice President of St. Bernard Parish School Board, and it's time for super news.
Hello, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lamoyne. Welcome to this month's super news.
We'll kick off super news with terrific kids. Each month, our elementary schools honor students who shined in the first month of school. Nearly 200 elementary students were recognized throughout our district for their commitment in the classroom. Thank you to our community partners, the Kiwanis, for their continued support in investing in our future, the students of St. Bernard Parish.
Also invested in their futures were the Shawmet High School students who took part in the recent College Night. Over 250 students poured into Shawmet High School's cafeteria last week to meet admission and recruitment officers from nearly 30 different colleges. With over $7.5 million in scholarship money awarded to Shawmet High School seniors last spring, nights like College Night are very important to students, their families, and the school. Thanks to everyone who made this event possible.
And speaking of senior Owls, the academic streak continues. As for the third consecutive year, Shawmet High School is the home school of a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. Kenny Nguyen was recognized for this prestigious honor granted to the nation's most promising graduating seniors, allowing them to vie for millions of dollars in scholarship money. Kenny is a true product of St. Bernard Parish Public Schools, having attended elementary school at Joe Davies and middle school at Tris before becoming a CHS Owl. Kenny hopes to major in mathematics in pursuit of an eventual medical degree with Princeton University at the top of his list. Congrats, Kenny.
In addition to cheering for academic success, the recent Owl pep rally was also something to cheer about, as over 1,800 students gathered together in the Shawmet High School gym for an afternoon of music, dance, and school spirit, highlighted by the traditional jazz funeral procession. And when the cheering was over, judges awarded the Spirit Stick to the class of 2017. It truly was a great day to be an Owl.
This ceremony marks an important point of transition and milestone for seniors, signifying that they have crossed the boundary from underclassmen to seniors. The morning begins with the traditional car parade as decorated vehicles process to the school. Then, it's into the gym for their coveted bling, their senior ring. It's a great day, and we congratulate the over 400 members who make up the class of 2017.
In other more serious news, several dignitaries were on the Shawmet High School campus recently to talk to our upperclassmen about the dangers of addiction. U.S. Attorney General Ken Politt, District Attorney Perry Nikosia, and Sheriff Jimmy Pullman shared personal and tragic stories of the ever-growing opioid epidemic. This visit was part of a statewide initiative on college and high school campuses across the region, and a serious sobering look at the problem, and a reminder of the importance of good decision-making.
And now, it's time for our school features, where each month, we honor some outstanding educators for their outstanding commitment and contributions in the classroom. Today, we recognize Amber Moreland from Andrew Jackson Middle School, an art and journey-to-careers teacher known for integrating literacy into all of her classes.
We want to write it from the third person, stating something like, "This artwork is beautiful because it shows my favorite colors."
From Airby Elementary, we pay homage to Sarah Larkins, a music teacher known for her interactive and engaging activities and her selfless efforts in teaching others.
Let's hear "Open, One, Two, Three." Look at my fingers.
And finally, Beth Loga, a second-grade teacher at Shawmet Elementary, an extremely talented and dedicated school leader who maximizes learning time each and every day.
Next child, three before 13. Three before 13, raise your child.
Our exceptional staff and school leaders ensure the success of every student. And each month, we also recognize an outstanding staff member and school leader. This month, we recognize Denise Sanchez, a counselor at Davies Elementary School. With nearly 40 years of experience, Denise does an amazing job in a variety of roles.
We also celebrate the contributions of the dynamic Carol Munt, an assistant principal at Shawmet High School. Her warm smile, cheerful disposition, and incredible knowledge of curriculum is recognized by all who cross her path. Well, that will do it for this edition of super news. But before we go, we'd like to pay a special tribute to a special lady.
In a simple and touching ceremony, last week, over 350 students, faculty, and friends gathered at Senate Court at the St. Bernard Middle School gym to honor Sue DeFess with a balloon release. The school longtime principal recently passed away after her courageous bout with cancer. A school leader in the district for more than 20 years, Sue will be greatly missed.
On behalf of Miss DeFess's family, and on behalf of the St. Bernard Middle School family, we thank everybody for being here today as we celebrate a lady who we loved so, so much.
Thanks for tuning in to super news. And remember, report card conferences are on October 26th at the following times. High school, 3:30 to 7:00. Middle school, 4:00 to 7:15. And elementary school, 4:30 to 7:45.
We hope to see all of our parents there, and we look forward to seeing you here next month on super news, where we let the super news roll. We'll see you next time.
I just want to thank Barry Lamoyne and Jack Jackson for all of their editing and their help behind the scenes for this, and Barry's help on camera as well. So thank you very much. And unless there's any other questions, that will be it for tonight.
Any questions?
Good job.
Great job, Alex. Mr. England, good start. Alex, Barry, Barry and Jack, great job. It was very, very informative and well done. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, next item is an update on Orlean Mero Elementary School construction. And with us tonight, we have Mr. Carey. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting me for this. So we're going to show you the video, not video, the films, slides on Orlean Mero Elementary School.
He's flying up.
So, let me put the lights on. Orlean Mero Elementary School. So, this view is as you come in, the parent drop-off roadway, one of the major roadways into the school. And we see the front office with the higher windows. And you can see the clock tower going up. The clock tower will be almost 40 feet high when it's done, and it will be connected to the building. So it'll be a landmark on Parish Road. You can see the main parking area by the parent drop-off. You see the water retention system being put in. That's a parish requirement. And this one over on this side holds 131,000 gallons of water that will be stored until it can be released into the parish system. We would just, if we put it all in at one time, we'd just drown out the drainage system. So we have to store it. And we got one on the other side as well, on the bus drop-off side. So here is the public entrance into the school. The entrance is on the left, and then on the right is the art classroom when you first walk in. This is the main office, looking into the main office, where the secretaries will be and where the reception will be. There'll be a desk in that open space in the middle with a row-down grill. So here is again the main office. This is looking down the office hallway toward the principal's office and the conference rooms and assistant principals. And at the end of the hallway is the teachers lounge with nice views, nice sunny room looking out into the area. Now we're looking into the Resource Center from the lobby. And it'll be a nice, big space. And you can see, we're looking from here into the offices for the Resource Center. And you can see, we've introduced another color in here, sort of red-orange columns. This is down the main, one of the main hallways leading to the classrooms. You really can't see the colors that well in here, but you'll see the top stripe is green and the bottom stripe is yellow, and that's the colors of the school, the green and yellow. And we introduced a little bit burnt orange color into it to kind of pep it up a little bit. You can see it there. This is one of the classrooms. This is one of the pre-K classrooms here. This is the pre-K courtyard, play yard for the kids. They all have doors leading out of their classroom onto this space, and it will have one of those rubber playing surfaces, and it'll have a whole jungle gym-like play equipment in here. And we're looking at the cafeteria beyond that. I'm sorry, the other one, we're looking at the Resource Center. This is looking, in the same yard, we're looking at the cafeteria here. Now we're in the cafeteria at this point, so it's a nice, large space, similar to what we've been doing in the past. And here is, we're looking at the stage. It'd be a raised stage with curtains and everything, the lighting, everything that we have at the other schools. Again, this is the stage area that's raised. Now, these pictures were taken only a week ago, and it seems like so much more has been done, because we have had fantastic weather to get the school done. I mean, incredible weather. Now, this is looking from the cafeteria toward the gymnasium, and the gymnasium steel just started to go up this week. And this is looking at a small area we have in that second courtyard for special ed students to go out and have their own space as well. We're looking down another hallway toward the gymnasium. So this is the gym slab, and the area you see that's gray is really the last area that needed to be poured, and it's poured now. That's where the basketball court is going. It had to be a special pour because of the levels. You have to keep it really level to perceive the wood floor that's going in there. And then we're looking at the play yard. There'll be a fenced play yard outside of the gymnasium, and it will also have a rubber surface of a plane. So we're in the gym, looking back at the cafeteria. And that space in the foreground where you see some farm work, that's going to be like an outdoor classroom area. We're back in the cafeteria, looking toward the kitchen on the right. That's all the kitchen area. And here, we have the bus entrance for the building, the number of the school kids. The parents' drop-off is on one side, the north side, and the school bus is on the south side. We have a total of like 300 parking spots at the school, so it's a lot. Again, back, we're going down the hallway again. You can start to see some of the colors. And each of the four hallways will have a different color floor, so you can tell the kids to go in the blue hallway or the yellow hallway or something. There'll be a difference in the colors. Again, here we are back at the front entrance, and the clock tower going up. It's really been an exciting school. It's really beautiful on the inside, but I hope this will give you some idea of what's going on. We're still on construction date. It's still going to be in June. So everything, we're caught up all the time. We lost at the very beginning. It's all going according to schedule now. And that's it.
Very good.
Any questions?
Any questions from board members?
One quick question.
Mr. Long?
It's nice to see that it's ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
And so if we do have any delays, you're saying it's scheduled right now for June?
Right now, it's June, yes. We hope to have furniture audited by then, so that we don't waste any time getting furniture in place and all.
Okay. And we don't have to worry about an impact on the neighborhood at this school, like some of the other schools?
No, there'll be enough parking and enough stacking area so that parents waiting to pick up children will have a lot of room to stack up without having to stack on the highway.
Right. Sounds great. Okay, thank you.
Also, the bus entrance will have its own entrance onto Parish Road without having to come back to that intersection. They will have a merging lane onto Parish Road.
Great.
Is that it, Mr. Long? Mr. England?
Yeah, just to follow up on about the bus route right there. What about the state with the transportation, as far as putting a warning light or?
That's something we all still have to work on.
We, you know, we've been working on that, and we've also contacted our legislators to help us with that, and hopefully, we can get the transportation, state transportation department to agree that a traffic light there is necessary. There's a lot of discussion about how close it is to the next one. So they're looking at the traffic studies and making a determination.
We're just looking out for the safety of the children.
It's definitely a safety issue as far as we're concerned.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Warner?
Quick question on your subsurface drainage. Where does that drain into? Is that going into the 20 Arpent Canal right there?
No, it goes into the state highway drainage in front of the building. But it only goes in as the state highway drainage can take it. So you have a huge downpour that has to be stored in that underground storage system until it starts to go down, and then it feeds that water into the highway department's drainage system.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Carey, thank you for the presentation. We're all very excited and anxious to see the completion.
Let's keep the prayers for good weather like we've been having. That's what we need.
Amen.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a much-needed new school, and I'm sure all the board members have been asked the question too. It's going to be an elementary school, and, you know, and it's going to be the Mero Elementary, Orlean Mero Elementary School, and they're going to be the Bs, right?
Bs.
As this school used to be Mero Elementary with the colors.
Same colors, same mascot as the old Mero Elementary.
So, we thank you again for your presentation. Thank you. Okay. Next item is Red Ribbon Week, and with us tonight, we have Mr. Charles Gassar.
Good evening, everyone. It can be a tricky statement, isn't it? Red Ribbon Week. And as you all know, the journey of this has been sort of a long and complicated one. Mrs. Reagan started this process quite some time ago, and it's interesting, because the process really began when the Reagans looked around at so many of their very wealthy and influential friends, and to see the calamity and the tragedy that was taking place within the families of those people. And you look at that, and you fast-forward to today, the horrendous statistic that says 90% of all violent crimes taking place in America, or in some way or another, drug-related. So if we don't get this right, our society truly faces tremendous peril. And my journey has been sort of a process of attempting to balance for our kids, information, honest information about the dangers and the difficulties associated with beginning a journey in that direction, and at the same time, realizing we need to offer to our students every possible opportunity to be positively involved in the world around them, be it academics, be it athletics, be it arts. And attempting to create that strategic balance for our young people in this community has been, I guess, the last 23-year mission for me. And this next piece of this journey, I think, comes to us with more science than we've ever had before. There is a tremendous effort taking place locally, believe it or not, at the LSU Medical Center. The Primate Research Center and LSU have been working together, and they're literally studying, and this is not a pleasant topic, but one I think that's so very important. Ms. Voce and I have talked about this a little bit, that the... Ms. Voeche and I have talked about this a little bit, that the, there are some people that are just very prone to addictive disorders. And the more that people can understand that process, I think it helps remove the myth that, you know, you guys, you've heard twenty, thirty years ago, oh, you smoke this, or you do this, and this terrible thing's going to happen. Well, it does for some people and doesn't for others. And the more that we can give kids honest information, I think the better young people will be able to negotiate through this journey. And that's the, that's the next level of what we're about to enter into. As the, the news shared with you guys, the attorney for this region has brought that very powerful video, Chasing the Dragon. There is without question a national crisis about heroin, and part of it, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Voeche and I, again, talked about this, the day of that event, that what people don't necessarily understand is that if there's pain issues in someone's life, and people now are afraid to take medication, well, it's placing that information together correctly. If someone's in pain and they take medication, they get, as the pain reduces, the medication reduces, people are not necessarily going to get addicted. But when the pain reduces and people continue to take the medication, that's where the problem begins. And it's information like that, that I think is so very important for our community and for our school kids. We have reached out, Ms. Voeche, me on behalf of Ms. Voeche and you guys, to Metropolitan Human Resources, which is the agency for the district, for the area, charged with just that, that kind of journey, of helping to get the correct information out. And with the help of Penn TV, that's, that is in fact our journey for this school year, to help balance information for our kids on high school level, middle school level, and obviously on an elementary level, as well as eventually to our community, to help community members understand how this works and what we can do. And very importantly, since there is now a clinic in the community, to help bridge that gap of what services exist for those families who are struggling with addictive issues within those families. Help is here. We don't have to send people to Metairie or to Baton Rouge for services. There now are some services in the community. And so, as we bring that particular, those pieces of information together, I think we can make some real differences for our kids and ultimately the community. On the fun side, that was all very sober conversation, but on the fun side, red ribbons will be going to elementary through high school on Monday. We'll be celebrating Red Ribbon Week, and I've chosen a theme that kind of merges the PBIS initiative of being positive and respectful and responsible, and good people, good people. That's what we want our kids to be, is good people. And putting as a cap on that message, the whole concept of you want to be a good people? You want to do good things? Well, ultimately, you need to choose to be drug-free, because that's where ultimately it all brings us. We'll be bringing high school kids to talk at the middle schools, which is always a very powerful, it used to be just fun, now it's very powerful, because our high school kids have much to say, lots to say, lots to encourage with. So I really look forward to that, and as, as we are able to update you more on the, the real complex part of this journey, Ms. Voeche will allow me, I'm sure, to come talk to you guys, to bring that message forward. So, thank you, guys.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. England?
Yeah, the comment I have is the presentation that the DA's office gave.
Yes, sir.
For that meeting with the students. I talked to a couple of students after the presentation, and they were really, they were really taken by this. It was really fantastic, and so I think it struck home, and so it's an eye-opener.
It is, and we plan to use that and some other pieces to begin to give kids shorts, so that there's short pieces of information that's meaningful, impactful. If you remember, Mr. England afterward, there were some kids who wanted to talk to Mr. Nikosia.
Right.
About drug court, and so there's obviously things that need to be talked about with our kids. So, you know, I think we're on a, a new pathway as, as communities across the country realize that this is a very serious journey, and it's not a quick fix, and as we work it, it can be better.
The main thing is that the students are on the right path.
Yes, sir. And then to that, ladies and gentlemen, very happy to announce that in February, once again, Epic Assemblies have chosen to come to us, which is, again, amazing. I think because of the amount of student involvement that occurs, they've been willing to come back to us yet again for the third year. Their target audiences, as I've shared, normally both extremes in America, either extreme inner-city children or children from Manhattan and places like that, and we're kind of an unusual middle target, and because of our Katrina story is what brought them here to us at first, and truly, their message has been epic.
And, and Mr. England, I think too, you talked about how powerful that the movie was, or the video was, and I know it was extremely, and, but I think a missing piece to this, and Mr. Kassar and I have talked about this extensively at different levels, whether it be elementary or middle or high, it's, you show a piece of that or whatever is appropriate, but I think that the biggest discussion with kids is, what do I do if I find myself in that environment? What do I do as an elementary student if I find myself in that home environment or neighborhood environment? How do I cope if I want to maybe not do this, or how do I live with that? And then what happens when I get a little bit older and at the middle school level, and I'm faced with this continually, either at home or in the neighborhood? And then as they grow a little into the high school, where that pressure becomes very great, what do I do and still be able to have friends and, and to be a member of my family and my community, and not maybe take that pathway? So those coping mechanisms for kids, or some help and assistance, and what do I do if I find myself in the middle of this kind of a situation at the appropriate age level, I think is, is going to be a very powerful piece if we can try to put that together for them.
Ms. Voeche, you've said it exactly. That is in fact the mission, you guys, because on the, and this is a very emotional topic, on the high school level, you know how connected I am to so many of those kids? There are so many stories of kids living in situations that is just unbelievable. The coping skills of so many of our kids is just unbelievable, that they still can do math, that they still can do tech, that they still can play football, in spite of the complicated situations that they're in. It's, this is really an important journey that I think we're entering into, really is.
Is that it, Mr. England?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I just want to jito what Mr. England said, that the presentation, the assembly that Mr. Kassar, you and Ms. Voeche put together, you know, with our attorney, you know?
US Attorney.
US Attorney, our sheriff, Mr. Jimmy Pullman, our DA, Perry Nikosia, you know, the representative from the FBI, representative from the DEA, and the, the movie was very, very impactful, but the personal testimony was so powerful. And, and it was just, it impacted, I know, all of our students, they, you know, it brought a lot of, you know?
And, and Ms. Dassar?
Personal, you know, information to them, and it was, it was, it was just very, very powerful, and I think, you know, it really hit home to our students.
Well, our hope is with these shorts, to be able to pair people like you've just talked about, that they each have a part of this and a piece of the message to be able to connect it, so that kids will be able to hear from the law enforcement side, from the personal side, from the educational side, from the medical side, so that kids get the message in, in a total round sense, so that it all comes together and really begins to build substance into our young people.
And Mr. Kassar, you mentioned something about the services now in St. Bernard Parish. I know we had the, the committee for years, and, you know, that was something that the committee was working toward. Can you explain to everyone exactly what services are here in St. Bernard Parish for those who may need it?
Metropolitan has opened a clinic in what used to be the bank in St. Bernard, in Araby, and they're negotiating through their hours and literally putting together their service program as we speak. And one of the letters that Ms. Voeche and I put together to Metropolitan is to get just that information, to know exactly what services are they going to provide the days of the week, and part of what we're going to do with Penn TV is be able to provide that, so that the community will know what to do if dealing with this set of issues, what days of the week, and so on.
But nothing is in concrete yet.
It's in the process.
That facility and the services, right?
Yes, ma'am, it is, and it was a, it was sort of a...
Ongoing.
Right as this facility was opening, they changed directors for the entirety of Metropolitan, so some things changed and are still changing.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I just, the Chasing the Dragon.
Yes, sir.
Is that out there on YouTube? You can go look at it on YouTube, in case other parents want to go look at it?
Sure we can.
Because I, I went to the Epic Assemblies last year, and that was a powerful, like you said, powerful presentation.
Thank you all for coming, those of you that were able to come, I appreciate it.
And I didn't know if that was something that was out there on YouTube also, or is that something?
Just bites, just small pieces.
Just small pieces.
Now, at Raleigh, we're using the Epic Assembly video, because Jack and Dave videoed it, and we're using pieces of that to begin conversation with kids. And then when they come back again this year, we're going to merge all that together, that they saw, one group of kids have had conversation about the particular topics and issues, and then there'll be this, this second group, this third group of kids that are going to come and present. The Raleigh kids will have an opportunity to have conversation again, live and direct, with this new group of people.
And it was, it was really good for parents, too, and I'm thinking for myself, from some of the perspective that you see that's going on, it gives the parents a really good perspective, so if there's any bits and pieces we could put out on Penn TV?
I need to give permission to do that, but I will ask, thank you, Mr. Warner.
Or if it's out there on YouTube, to encourage parents to go look at that, and also the Chasing the Dragon.
Because of the very intense nature, you know, those young people that present their story, that's their story.
Right.
So there is some discretion as to what's put out on the internet. That's the, that's the thing. Because these are all young people who have gone into recovery from a variety of addictive issues, and really abusive families in some cases, so it's, it's complicated to just put it out there in a wholesale fashion.
Well, good, if the, I didn't see the Chasing the Dragon, but maybe parents can go out there and look at that on YouTube, if it's as powerful as you say. It gives parents a different perspective on what's going on in the dynamics that are out there, you know?
And again, it's all heroin-centered, you know, the, a big piece of what, of the LSU work that's taking place right now with Dr. Mesa, is that there is now biological proof, and I know this sounds so glum, but there's biological proof through MRIs and profound research. There was a consortium that came together at the beginning of last school year, five, five experts, they are the world's expert on the effects of alcohol and neurological development in young people. And the evidence is astounding, you can see it on, on MRI screens, that young people should not consume quantities of alcohol until someone's at least twenty-one years of age, until you are neurologically finished in the development. They blew away the myth that says, oh, you know, in Europe, kids come around and, and drink at the table and there's no issues to it. These people talked about this at length, that there's just so much myth that has ill-directed communities and societies all across the world for such a very long time. So, again, trying to bring that information in ways that's meaningful and not just negative, because obviously, kids don't want to hear no, kids want to hear at least what's going on and why, and that's part of the challenge that's before us.
Is that it, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Thank you, Ms. Dassar. Yeah, Mr. Kassar, as we all, our early intervention before, once, once you've been a user for the more time, it's more difficult to deal within, in those situations.
And you know, Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
That was the perception, and to be very honest, that was the perception. For some people, biologically and chemically, it might not be the case.
It's never too late.
That's right.
Never too late.
But, but some people, you know, they, they, they get involved in, in substance abuse, and they can come out of it. And there are others that do, and there's just no coming out of it. There is a biological complexity.
There's sometimes a propensity there, depending on the individual's makeup, but of course, the best way to intervene before you're even a user at all.
Yes, sir.
And to stay away from drugs, and of course, drugs-free is a good omen, but it's not always that easy. You have situations, you have peer pressure, and that's, that's a tremendous...
Yes, sir.
...indicator of what people are going to do. So, again, we, we compliment you on your efforts for, how many years now?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So, so again, it's individuals that stayed away from drugs because of your efforts, and efforts of those people that's been involved in the program. So we want to continue awareness and try to help as many people as you can, because it's, it's extremely important, these efforts for these people that you save from the use of drugs.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. And just to, principals have been such a wonderful help, teachers have been involved, aides, so many people in our schools really believe in this message and are continually helped. And a really important shout-out, ladies and gentlemen, is Mr. David Fernandez. Through the years, these twenty-three years, so very often, Mr. Fernandez has been there to help to find money for ribbons when there wasn't money, and to do things, so that we've always been able to do some things to make a difference. So, Mr. Fernandez, thank you so much.
Is that it, Dr. Kraft?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. England?
Yes, I just want to follow up on one thing that I forgot to say. I'd really like to thank Sheriff Pullman.
Yes.
And Mr. Nikosia, our DA, for giving a fantastic message to these students.
Yes, indeed.
That comes from, I think, from the whole board, and from our whole school system. Thank you, Mr. Kassar.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks again, Mr. Kassar. Next item on the agenda, personnel changes for October 2016.
No, wait, number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He sat down, he shouldn't have sat down.
He sat down.
He threw a curve on there.
You did throw me a curve, Mr. Kassar. Okay, update on cultural arts activities.
Okay, well, now talking about the fun stuff. Well, so very much to share with you guys, you know, the excitement of, as we talked about last time I was here, over a hundred kids at Shawmet High School's band, over seventeen in chorus, forty-seven in tech, just kids on middle school, elementary, high school, so much interest and excitement in being part of performance opportunities. And so much of what we do is not only instructional but performance-based. I had the opportunity to talk to Shawmet's band after Ring Day for a pretty intense conversation, and said to them, at this point, you guys, you need to realize, you are probably one of St. Bernard Parish's strongest PR weapons. Every time that you guys march, every time you're out in the community, you're making people get so excited about what we have in our community. It's a, it's a wonderful thing. So, on a, a... So, on a, another piece of exciting, good news. Trist Elementary, Araby, both applied for Jazz and Heritage Foundation funds to do some specific enrichment activities. For Trist Elementary, they received $3,000 to bring musicians in to do one-on-one and group instruction in sections. So that for percussion or brass or woodwind, men and women who are experts and who are artists will be coming into Trist to work with them. At Araby Elementary, percussionists, because Sarah, that you guys saw on the video, Sarah does a drum circle. And that's an opportunity for kids both to perform, to, to bond, to come together, to deal with stress. There's a lot behind the scenes of what goes on with that wonderful program. And Charlene Strain and I also applied and received $2,500 for the, to accompany monies to begin, again, this spring, the Instrumental Music Academy to get our elementary students and middle school students who want to really begin to improve their band skills. Because as I shared with you all last time, the earlier on we can do real training, that kids can really begin to play, the greater the opportunities. And kids can both earn community support and ultimately financial support in their journey through college. So we're very, very excited about that. Other incredible news. Switch that for just a second. On the, on our concert series, Christmas becomes quite a really exciting time. Starting on December 3rd, with the Islenios, our schools will be, will be participating in just an ongoing array of Christmas activities. Saturday, December 3rd, at the Islenios. The, the week of the 8th and the 9th will be Shawmet High School's Christmas Gala. Then on the 10th will be Dockville Children's Christmas Festival, which will involve all of the students in our elementary and middle schools and some elementary students. And then from the 12th all the way through the 21st will be a combination of concerts and performance activities that will either occur at the Cultural Arts Building and at their schools. The school component are still, in some cases, being worked through. And once we have all of that composite information, I'll make sure that you all get that. So you can see the quite complex calendar of every night you can be somewhere or two or three places, if you choose, to be, to be there in celebration with us. So we're, we're very, very excited about that. Then, two more pieces of information. Caroline Boudreaux, if you guys remember Caroline. Caroline is the young lady who was Fiona in our Shrek. Caroline had the incredible privilege of being sought after by Loyola. Caroline didn't go to Loyola. Loyola came to Caroline at Shawmet High School, which is a real rare, real thing. Caroline had, is the only sophomore placed in Loyola's opera this season. Not double-cast, which is a tremendous accomplishment. The young woman has just a tremendous gift. There's, there's no question. And we also had the privilege of Annalise Kassar having one of, several of her choral students participated in the New Orleans Opera Competition. And those kids performed extremely well and received great recognition and great scores. So lots and lots of good things occurring. And we're just so very grateful for the wonderful facilities that you guys have helped make possible, as well as materials that our kids are proving what amazing kids in St. Bernard Parish can do.
Charles, what about the art teacher who made the videos? Why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Thank you, Ms. Voeche.
Just for a second.
Sarah Felt. Sarah Felt from Davies. Sarah worked with, with me in an intern situation during the summer on Beauty and the Beast. And became so excited about moving art to a very large level. So Sarah began this school year to take her lessons from the classroom and either video them or even doing things at home and has put them on YouTube so that parents and kids can do art together. Or the kid can work on it because he was out or she was out because of being ill. And the, the Arts Council of New Orleans, who's always perusing and searching what's going on, saw that and called me Friday, three weeks ago, just in, just adulation of what she's done of bringing art, technology, usable time, family activities, just has sandwiched this amazing component together. And she'll be recognized at Davies in the very near future. So isn't that amazing? Thank you, Ms. Voeche, for that remark.
Thank you, Mr. Kassar. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Just want to thank you, Mr. Kassar, and all, all the hard work that you do in cultural arts and Ms. Voeche and our, our whole administrative team and the Kassars, all the Kassars who help out in all the productions. And kudos go out to Caroline Fayard and the students who participated in the opera. Not Caroline Fayard, I'm sorry. Caroline Boudreaux. And it's not a political plug whatsoever. Caroline Boudreaux. And all the students who participated in the opera. And to our art teacher at Davies, that's, that's an awesome recognition. And that's just going beyond the call. And, you know, it just shows the enthusiasm of our entire, you know, all our teachers. And particularly the art teacher at Davies. And on writing the grants, Mr. Kassar, who wrote the grants for Trist and Araby Elementary?
The teachers.
The teachers.
The teachers, yeah. Matter of fact, it began with the, the music teacher, Mr. Landry. Mr. Landry, like Mr. Kirth, plays professionally. He's, he is a musician and knows many of those people and realized that it was the opportunity, wrote the grant. This is his third year in receiving funds. And we've talked about it at In Service, and Sarah wrote one. And you all will appreciate this only because you, you all know the backstory of so much of what goes on. Charlene Strain was in the sewing room this year while we were working on Beauty and the Beast, sewing and typing at the same time, trying to put together, because of the deadline to try to make that grant happen. So it did.
Well, our thanks and congratulations go out to you and Miss Strain for writing the grant that you wrote, but also the teachers at Araby Elementary and at Trist.
We hope to pursue more of those.
Grant writing is, is very tedious and takes a lot of time. So we appreciate the extra efforts that all of you have done to receive the grants. And again, our thanks go out to Mr. Rusk, who has built the band program and, and the Kassars for the choral and the, all the productions.
It's all happening. It's happening.
And Mr. Carey for his, his continued help with the arts. We appreciate all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Next is, are the personnel changes for October. And with us, we have Mr. Graham Barry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we are.
Okay, we have two retirees, Benny Nunez with Maintenance. Congratulations to Benny and thank you for your many years of service. And we wish you a very happy retirement. And Gwendolyn Harvey from Shawmet High. We thank you for your, your years of service and we want to wish you a happy retirement also. To Benny Nunez and Gwendolyn Harvey, thanks. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay.
If anybody knows any math teachers, we'll be glad to have them, okay? We're in need of math teachers right now.
We need math teachers, so, yes. God bless you.
We'll find that and they'll all move up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham Barry. Next item was superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Voeche?
Okay, just a reminder, at the regular board meeting next week, we will have the results of our 2015-16 Financial and Compliance Audits. The auditors will be with us. Again, we're expecting a very good report. I would presume, I haven't had an exit conference yet, but we will be doing that shortly. And they will be here next Tuesday night to report to you in that capacity. And just again, another reminder that Monday morning, John White, our state superintendent, will be with us at Davies Elementary School. And we'd love to have you with us if, right after the meeting, let me know if you're able to attend the assembly Monday morning. That's it.
Any other business? Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Okay, there being none. There's a motion to adjourn by Ms. Acevedo, second by Mr. Campbell. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.